meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board, do we convene? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scribner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 8, 2022, 9:00 a.m. meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute, and I'll be led by Supervisor Perez. And I'd ask you to please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Please stand.
Thank you, Chairman. Please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, next, I'm going to call on Nick Cullen. He is our Director of Animal Services, and he's going to introduce our Pet of the Week. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Chairman Scribner, members of the board. I have with me this morning our Pet of the Week. Her name is Annabelle. She -- don't let her fool you. She's full of energy. Annabelle's about a four-month-old terrier mix. She's available at the Kern County Animal Shelter. She's a super-sweet girl. She's going to be a small breed between 15 and 20 pounds, and she gets along well with other dogs and just loves every human being she comes across.
All right, Annabelle, good luck to you. She's a cutie. Thank you, Nick. We appreciate it.
She's a cutie. All right.
Okay, we'll begin by considering the consent agenda. And agendas are located on the tables near the doors for anyone who wishes to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session items, and I will read the consent agenda item numbers now. So, starting on page two, items one and two, as well as 10, 11, and 12 are on consent. On page three, items three -- sorry, 13 through 15 are on consent, and 18 and 19 are also on consent. Page four, all items 23 through 26 are on consent. Page five, all items 27 through 34 are on consent. Page six, all items 35 through 41 are on consent. On page seven, we have items 43 through 49 on consent, so number 42 at the top is not. On page eight, all items 50 through 57 are on consent. And finally, on page nine, item 58 is on consent. And I'm going to go ahead and read into the record that Isaac Scribner will abstain from the following consent calendar items due to the following conflicts, and so item 44, I will be abstaining because of a source of income to my spouse. Madam Clerk, please record my abstention on each -- on this item, even though I will vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar. My vote will only be for those remaining items. So, at this point, I'll ask if there's any members of the audience that have any comments on the consent agenda. All right, so you now return to the board for questions, comments, or a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent.
Second. You have a motion, second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Okay, now, we will return back to page two of our agenda, and we have several items under resolutions and proclamations, and three of these are -- or, sorry, six of these are going to be done by one supervisor for the pair. And so, first, we have items three and four, which will be presented by Supervisor Perez. Number three is to proclaim November 8 through December 1, 2022, as the 35th Annual Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County. And number four is to proclaim November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County. Supervisor Perez, please.
Thank you, Chair. Motion on three and four, please.
Second. You have a motion, second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Hi, Ian. Pleasure. Okay, well, welcome, Lito. I don't know if you fully appreciated, when you took on this role, how big of a task and how many people and their expectations and hopes, you know, are really centered in what we do annually here as part of the county family. And I'm really thrilled. I'm sure you were more than happy to take it on, but really, I'm thrilled that it's you, Lito, at the helm, because it is so important to
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board, we convene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 8, 2022, 9:00 a.m. meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with the flag salute, and I'll be led by Supervisor Perez, and we'd ask you to please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Please stand.
Thank you, Chairman. Please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, next, I'm going to call on Nick Cullen. He is our Director of Animal Services, and he's going to introduce our Pet of the Week. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivner, members of the board. I have with me this morning our Pet of the Week. Her name is Annabelle. She, don't let her fool you, she's full of energy. Annabelle's about a four-month-old terrier mix. She's available at the Kern County Animal Shelter. She's a super sweet girl. She's going to be a small breed between 15 and 20 pounds, and she gets along well with other dogs and just loves every human being she comes across.
All right. Annabelle, good luck to you. She's a cutie. Thank you, Nick. We appreciate it.
She's a cutie.
All right.
All right.
Okay, we'll begin by considering the consent agenda, and agendas are located on the tables near the doors for anyone who wishes to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session items, and I will read the consent agenda item numbers now. So, starting on page two, items one and two, as well as 10, 11, and 12 are on consent. On page three, items three, sorry, 13 through 15 are on consent, and 18 and 19 are also on consent. Page four, all items 23 through 26 are on consent. Page five, all items 27 through 34 are on consent. Page six, all items 35 through 41 are on consent. On page seven, we have items 43 through 49 on consent, so number 42 at the top is not. On page eight, all items 50 through 57 are on consent. And finally, on page nine, item 58 is on consent. And I'm going to go ahead and read into the record that Isaac Scrivner will abstain from the following consent calendar items due to the following conflicts, and so item 44, I will be abstaining because of a source of income to my spouse. Madam Clerk, please record my abstention on each, on this item, even though I will vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar. My vote will only be for those remaining items. So, at this point, I'll ask if there's any members of the audience that have any comments on the consent agenda. All right, seeing none, I'll return to the board for questions, comments, or a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent?
Second.
You have a motion, second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Okay, now, we will return back to page two of our agenda, and we have several items under resolutions and proclamations, and three of these are, or sorry, six of these are going to be done by one supervisor for the pair. And so, first, we have items three and four, which will be presented by Supervisor Perez. Number three is to proclaim November 8 through December 1, 2022, as the 35th Annual Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, and number four is to proclaim November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County. Supervisor Perez, please.
Thank you, Chair. Motion on three and four, please.
Second.
You have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
Okay, well, welcome, Lido. I don't know if you fully appreciated, when you took on this role, how big of a task, and how many people and their expectations and hopes, you know, are really centered in what we do annually here as part of the county family. And I'm really thrilled. I'm sure you were more than happy to take it on, but really, I'm thrilled that it's you, Lido, at the helm, because it is so important to so many people. I know that personally from decades of experience, and it's just so important that we develop community every single way that we can, and to show love. So, thank you, Lido. Good morning, Chairman Scrivner, members of the board. Today, we are proclaiming November 8 through December 1 as the 35th Anniversary of the Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, 35. Now, in our 35th year, our Department of Human Services has been fulfilling the holiday wishes of children living in foster care. Children come into foster care through no fault of their own. They have been abused or neglected, and can range in age from newborn to 21 years of age. There are often siblings, some with special needs, and most have been through some kind of traumatic experience and experiences. We have over 1,100 children living in foster group homes in Kern County, 1,100, who've been invited to complete a wish request. The Holiday Cottage provides gifts to the children in foster care who may not be with their families during the holiday season. These gifts can be the only hope and encouragement some children may receive. We are fortunate that here in Kern County, our generous community provides gifts to children, so they can experience the joy of the holidays and the joy of community. I want to commend Lido, our Director of Human Services in the Holiday Cottage, for organizing and providing this much-needed service and love to foster children in Kern County. I'm so happy to start the holiday season, enjoy my colleagues, and proclaiming November 8 through December 1 as 35th Anniversary Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, with the hopes of making holidays, holidays brighter for the children of Kern County. Lido? Today, we proudly proclaim this is your first of many, I hope. Board of Supervisors, County of Kern State of California, has officially proclaimed November 8 through December 1 as the 35th Annual Holiday Cottage Days in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chairman, Zach Scrivner. Lido, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for this proclamation. It's an honor and a privilege, obviously, not only to serve as your department head for Human Services, but to be here in front of you to talk about the Holiday Cottage and what it means to our community. So, the holidays are upon us, and truly, this is my favorite time of the year. A lot of that has to do with the giving and the goodness that happens throughout this time period. As Supervisor Perez alluded to, we have a very generous community when it comes to the Holiday Cottage. Everybody comes out and supports it. We have private, public, organizations, nonprofits, everyone in the community, filling the wishes of our 1,100 foster kids. It's truly an amazing thing to see. I'd also like to thank our CEO's office this year. They are joining us this year by sponsoring a foster family, so thank you to them. Tomorrow, we'll be holding a press conference, talking about the Holiday Cottage a little bit more, and kind of sharing what we're doing all together, and hoping to garner more support for this event. Children in foster care are really deserving and really need to be noticed, in particular, the holidays, and I don't want the Holiday Cottage to be understated, because it's so important to these foster kids, and I really can't say any better than Ian Gregory, who's joined me today to kind of talk about his experience as it relates to the Holiday Cottage. He used to be a foster youth. So, I'll turn it over to Ian, who's one of the most dynamic people I've ever met, I think. It's amazing. So, Ian?
Thank you.
Welcome, Ian.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Ian Gregory. I've been in foster care for about 12 years. Over the years, a lot of changing from foster homes and schools, never had the consistency. So, every time when it was this time of the year, you know, I would probably forget that the Holiday Cottage was around the corner, but my, my social workers and my mentors would always come in and say, hey, the Holiday Cottage is here. List down the three things you would like, and we'll do our best to make those wishes come true. Every year, I would put the same, almost the same three things, if I could get a laptop, some new shoes, and maybe a phone or an iPod, listen to music, and every year, it never, never failed, always there. So, I was very thankful. There was one year when I requested for a laptop, because school was kind of getting hard having to do it in the computer lab, and I had, they asked me what my GPA was. I was like, I have a 3.5, I'm doing football, I'm doing all these things, and they said, all right, well, we'll see what we can do. And they gave, they gave my foster family a phone call, and they said, um, come to the Holiday Cottage and let us, you know, be able to, you know, give you guys your gifts. And so, when I got there, got the opportunity to open it up, it was a complete touchscreen, the bells and whistles, Best Buy warranties. I mean, this person went all out. I mean, I did not, or whoever it was, went all out. I was like, this is unbelievable. Same year, I got new shoes. I mean, I could look in the back, I was like, wow, there's Xboxes back there, and bikes, and scooters, and I just knew, like, whoever was involved, they didn't know who I was, they didn't know my name. All they knew was my name and my age. They didn't know where I came from, they didn't know my story, they didn't know what school I went to, where I lived. All, all they knew was that I wanted these three things, and they made it happen. The most recent one that I had was when I was 18. I had got called in, they're like, hey, we need you to come down, just make some time, we really need you. They made it sound very urgent. So, I got there, I'm like, what can I do? How can I help? And they said, um, take a look around, everything you see as a furniture is yours. I was like, I was, I was lost for words. I'm looking around, like, you guys are sure, like, this is not, this is not a mistake? They're like, this is all yours. It was donated by IKEA, uh, do, because you are one of our rising stars. You have done so much for, you know, foster youth, for just to advocate and just to be that guy. And I was like, wow, I didn't even think that there was someone or people out there who made this unanimous decision to nominate me for furniture. In that same year, I was thinking about, okay, if I get my own place, how do I get a couch? How do I get lighting? How do I get the things that I had growing up in foster homes? And it was blessed to me. I mean, I was, I was just baffled. I couldn't believe it. And then they said, when you get your own place, we're going to store it for you, so don't have to worry about where it's going to be. When you get your own place, we will deliver it, you don't have to lift anything. And that happened. I got my own place, I gave Stacy a call, and she's like, hey, I told her, hey, I got my own place, uh, what can we, can we do to make the process for getting the furniture? And I kid you not, there was a big U-Haul-looking truck out front, they, two men came in, and they were just doing it, boom, boom, boom. Stacy's like, put it there, put it there, put it over there. Oh, no, how about we rearrange it? And it was so nice. I mean, they're talking about speaker lamps and nice furniture, rocking chairs. I mean, these things that I would never be able to afford at the time, and I'm like, wow. And I started going online, looking up, how much was all this? Three grand? I'm like, I, how do I pay these people back? And just to know that that was something that the community and IKEA partnered up together to just make that a dream come true. So, I have that in my new home. I just got a brand-new five-bedroom house, and that is now my new IKEA showroom, and I'm very thankful, I'm very blessed. I use it every day. I mean, I got, like, colorful light bulbs in it, could play the music, we can make it a whole disco show. So, I'm very thankful, I am very blessed, I'm very happy to know that the Holiday Cottage is continuing. There is so many, you know, I mean, young, young ones who won't, don't even understand what the Holiday Cottage is, but they're just going to get things. And to know that there's a community and people with resources and the, the means to just take care of foster youth is there, and I'm just so blessed and so thankful to be a part of that for the last 12 years, and that it's going to continue for 35 years, that is, that's incredible, and to hope that it could continue for another 35 on top of that. So, thank you very much for all you guys do, for just keeping this a continuous trend. It's very nice to know that there's the things that I had to experience are also being passed along to the, to the youth and to the young adults. Thank you.
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 Thank you very much.
God bless your work, Lido, and all the loving families in Kern County. Item number four today, I'm presenting to the Youth Action Board members. Are you here? Come on up. You all make me feel so old. Welcome. This is a proclamation for November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County. It really is about time we do this on a regular basis. Thank you so very much. We don't talk about it, and we need to, right? Chairman and members of the board, today, we are proclaiming November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County, to increase public awareness of the ongoing issues occurring not only here, but in every city, county, and state. An estimated 4.2 million youth and young adults experience homelessness each year, and out of that number, 700,000 are unaccompanied minors with no parent, family member, or guardian. These numbers don't include the youth that weren't counted because they were hiding, couch surfing, sleeping in cars, or abandoned buildings, or other places that are simply not identifiable. While trying to survive on the streets, youth are often exposed to countless dangers, the increased likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, impulsivity, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and a whole host of vulnerabilities of being trafficked and abused. The grim statistics of homeless youth and what they endure are more than just numbers, they are the lives of young people in our communities. They are Kern County kids. To help increase awareness locally, the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, Youth Action Board, made up of youth ages 18 to 24, who are currently or formerly homeless, created a photo gallery that illustrates what it's like to be a homeless youth. How creative. As we know, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. I want to commend these youth, the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, the Youth Action Board, and Kern County Network for Children, and the Dream Center for bringing this resolution forward to the county. I join my colleagues in proclaiming this November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, with the hopes of helping the community become more aware, more sensitive, and more loving with their resources, so that we can demonstrate to the youth of Kern County that we are people of love, we are a community of love, and that we love them. Board of Supervisors, County of Kern State of California, has officially proclaimed November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into and signed by our Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner, Zach Scrivner, excuse me. This is for you, and the floor is yours. If you could tell us who you are, I'm not sure if I listed your names or not, but we're eager to hear from you.
Good morning, Supervisor Perez and members of the board. Thank you for proclaiming November 2022 as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. My name is Cynthia Lara Martinez.
And I am Janessa Fisher, and here with us today, we have Dr. Anna Levin, Executive Director of the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. We are proud to be representing Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative's Youth Action Board.
The Youth Action Board is a committee that consists of 10 former or current homeless foster youth, and we bridge the gap between homeless youth and supporting agencies by providing the need of homeless youth.
November is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and to help increase local awareness, we created the Photo Journalism Project, which are the pictures you are seeing titled Through Our Eyes, because I can tell you, and I can show you so many statistics on homeless youth, but you weren't with me and Cynthia out there on the streets. You weren't going through what we were going through. So, if I show you, if I show you what it looks like, you can bring awareness, you can emphasize the help that they need.
There are currently more than 300 homeless youth in Kern County that have been accounted for, but there are many more that have not been connected to resources or services.
Being a homeless youth is extremely dangerous. Youth have to try to blend in to their community, many, much more than homeless youth than people realize, and see in our community.
The good news is, thanks to your board's support, there is services and resources out there for homeless youth. In fact, since 2018, when the Kern County Network for Children's Dream Center, Homeless Youth Services began, there has been 132 youth ages from 18 to 24, and 53 of their young children house. Me and my three children are one of those families.
If people encounter homeless youth, they can help them to call 211 or the Kern County Network for Children Dream Center, and the mounted photos are available for display in public places or groups. If anybody's interested, they can call the Kern County Network for Children Dream Center and ask for one of us.
Thank you for helping us increase awareness about youth homelessness, and thank you for your support of resources and supports and services for homeless youth.
Thank you.
Next, we have items five and six. Item five is to proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month, and November 25, 2022, as Native American Heritage Day in Kern County. And item six is to proclaim November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day in Kern County, and raise awareness regarding the impact of injuries on children. And Supervisor Maggert will make both of these presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve Proclamations five and six.
Second.
You have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
Good morning, colleagues. We are here this morning to proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month in Kern County, and November 25 as Native American Heritage Day in Kern County. I am joined by a whole host of folks, but I'm going to introduce three of them to us, and they're going to speak and say, have a few words for us as well. Here, as the CEO of the Bakersfield American, Bakersfield American Indian Health Project is the CEO, Angel Galvez.
Yes, sir.
Here. The Chairwoman of the Board of Directors, that would be Jackie Lopez, and the Vice Chair of the Board of Directors, Sal Hernandez. So, we're glad to have you all with us. We'll have you guys say something in a few moments, and, and we'll go from there. In November of 1990, Congress issued a joint resolution authorizing the President of the United States to proclaim Native American Heritage Month across the nation. For every November from then until now, that has happened across the country. And by joining together to recognize Native American Heritage Month, we can create a more cohesive campaign for honoring Native Americans and Indigenous peoples, and honor those who were here before us. In my own family, I have American Indian heritage, and my family was fortunate to write down some family history about things, and the Trail of Tears, and even some little funny sayings that I've, I can't find the, I've looked all over the internet, I can't find the meaning for them, but this eeny-meeny-moeny-sky thing that my grandma used to tell me, and all these fun things that are just part of the, the culture of our family, and across my extended family as well. It's important to remember those kind of things, and that's what this month is about doing. So, Angel, are you going to go first?
Okay. So, let me read this proclamation, and then you can say something about it, and then we'll have anybody else you want to speak. So, come, come on up a little closer, please. Thank you for being here this morning. So, this is a proclamation by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, on behalf of the State of California, as we have officially proclaimed November 22, 2022, as Native American Heritage Month, and November 25 as Native American Heritage Day in Kern County. It's been entered into our minutes by the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable Zach Scrivner, on this, the 8th day of November. Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate your, your attention to this and your, your dedication to it, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. You, but, thank you so much. Thank you again, Supervisor Mike Maggert. Appreciate the honesty and transparency of your story. It just moves us in a good way. I brought with me a symbol of sacredness, and I brought a wingtip, eagle feather, to help us in the direction, you know, the eagle uses the wingtip to help it in the direction that it goes, and so I brought that as a good sign of direction for the decades to come for this, for this county. It's a beautiful county, and the work that you all do, it's, it's just amazing. I also brought some sage, and it's just a symbol of, of blessing this, this meeting and blessing this in a good way, so I appreciate that. I'm very grateful for the recognition and appreciate the growing relationship that the Board of Supervisors, as well as the county departments, have had with our health center. A special recognition goes to Adult and Aging Services, the Kern Behavioral Health Recovery Services, HHS, with Lido, who used to be the previous Director for Aging and Adult Services, and many other county departments, including the Veterans Office, for really collaborating with Bakersfield American Indian Health. We are a health center, and we offer behavioral health and medical services, and many other services to our American Indian, Alaska natives who reside here in Kern County. As you know, the county is very vast. I am accompanied by my team of managers who stand behind us, as well as the Board of Directors for the Bakersfield American Indian Health, which, two of, two of which are Army veterans, and that's really the highlight of this proclamation, is really to highlight the fallen warriors and the feathers and who served in war, and so... And so I have two Army vets beside me, Mr. Salvador, who is Schumash and Salinian Tribal Member, and Ms. Bridget, who is here with us as well, who's Shalone Tribal Member. At this time, I'd like to ask and conclude by reading the land acknowledgement. I think it's always really good to recognize the land we stand on is land that belonged to the people who were here before us, and in the land acknowledgement, we'll make reference to those people, to those peoples, sorry. And I'll ask the Chairwoman, Ms. Jackie Lopez, who's Tejon Indian Tribal Member, to do us the honor of reading that land acknowledgement. And I leave you with Akishia Nehaya Paute, which is blessings to all. Thank you.
Good morning. It's an honor to stand before you all this morning on this special day. I am Jackie Lopez. I am Paiute, and as Angel says, I am a member of the federally recognized Tejon Tribe. Our land acknowledgement states, "In honor of Kern County Indigenous Peoples, Pueblos, Rancherias, and Tribal Lands, to the original people native to this land, the area known as Kern County today is the homeland of several American Indian tribes, including the federally recognized Tejon Indian Tribe comprised of Katana Muck, Yokat, Schumash, and Paiute Peoples, the Tubata Labo comprised of Tulami, Tubata Labo, and Paliguan Peoples, the Western Mono Peoples, Kua'isu Peoples, and Shalone Peoples. May we acknowledge and honor our Indigenous people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Kern County's Indigenous Peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Aho. Thank you."
Bye, everyone. Thank you. We're going to take a picture. Yeah, yeah, we're going to face right there. I just want to show everybody. Thank you. Ladies in front. Come on, you guys, warm up here. We'll get a little photo of her.
No, I'm five-four, so I might need a...
I don't want to hide super much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I appreciate your leadership. Actually, I brought some... What I could do is leave this with you all as a symbol.
That was fun and purposeful and meaningful. There we go. Amanda's going to come up and join us. This is Amanda Frank. She is from the Kern County Superintendent of Schools, and she's here today to accept our proclamation on behalf of the Valley Children's Healthcare Network. And we are here today... Hi, Amanda. Come on up a little closer. We are here today to proclaim November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day in Kern County. Sadly, injuries are the leading cause of death and injury, a grave injury, to our children ages one through eight. And isn't it the terror of every parent that something like that is going to happen to our children? And we are, by bringing attention to it, we will be talking about, and the month will be talking about, ways to prevent those tragic accidents and injuries from occurring. So today, we want to thank and commend Valley Children's for their effort in this regard, and I want to read this proclamation, and then you can say a few things if you like about what's going to happen this month. So this is a proclamation by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, the State of California. We have officially proclaimed November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day in Kern County to raise awareness regarding the impact of injuries on children, and this recognition has been entered into our official minutes by the signature of Zach Scrivener, Honorable Chairman. Thank you for representing what's going to happen this month. Please tell us a little bit about it.
Well, good morning, Chairman Scrivener, Board. My name is Amanda Frank, and can I first just say this morning has been, besides being Election Day, very moving, and such a reminder about the beauty that happens in our community and the work that goes on all the time. So, I'm already quieted, so we're just going to let that go. I am here to represent Valley Children's Healthcare, and on behalf of Valley Children's, I want to thank you for adopting this proclamation, recognizing November 18, 2022, as National Injury Prevention Day in Kern County. Valley Children's staff regret not being able to attend today's board meeting, as they are presently covering other Central Valley County Board of Supervisors meetings, which are the same time all across the valley today, and the same proclamation is being considered there as well. However, Tim Curley, the Director of Community and Government Relations for Valley Children's, will be attending your November 29th board meeting to offer a few words of thanks. As Chairman Maggert mentioned, injury is the leading cause of death for children in the United States. As the only pediatric trauma center in central California and a leader in pediatric healthcare, Valley Children's recognizes the importance of injury prevention, and they work collaboratively with community agencies to prevent those tragedies by providing education and outreach to children and families throughout the region. By adopting this proclamation, you are making an important contribution to childhood injury prevention efforts, and Valley Children's looks forward to continuing the work with you to keep Kern County children and their families safe as well. Thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you. Just take a picture of each other. Thank you. Next, we have items seven and eight on our agenda, and these will both be presented by Supervisor Couch. Item seven is to proclaim November 12, 2022, as National Kreutzfeldt-Jacob Disease Awareness Day in Kern County, and honoring the memory of former City of Bakersfield Mayor Harvey Hall. And number eight is to proclaim November 2022 as American Diabetes Awareness Month in Kern County. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Chairman. Motion on items seven and eight.
Second. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Hello again. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my honor to be here today to present this, but it's unfortunate that we have to even do it. Kreutzfeldt-Jacob Disease, I believe it's how, is that the right pronunciation? It's a funny sounding word, but the symptoms and the result of it are anything but, and it is unfortunately what took Mayor Harvey Hall from us far too early. But there's good news on the horizon. Due to the efforts of people like Levon, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about those efforts, soon after Mayor Hall passed away, Levon, in true fashion, that she would, became very involved, got on the board of the National Association, started her own chapter, or Bakersfield's chapter, I should say, and began having an annual fundraising event. And of course, the very first fundraising event that she put on was the largest fundraising event in the country for that association, and has been every year since then, five years in a row. They've raised $320,000 for this disease, to combat this disease. And there's good news on the horizon that in the next few years, there is a particular drug that is approaching clinical trials, and a lot of it is due to the money that has been raised by this organization. So I will read this proclamation, and then I'll be quiet, and I'll give the microphone to Levon, and she can tell us a little bit about this. The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 12, 2022, as International Kreutzfeldt-Jacob Disease or CJD Awareness Day in Kern County, and honoring the memory of former City of Bakersfield Mayor Harvey L. Hall. This recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair, Zach Scrivener, and it's dated today, November 8, 2022. Levon? Let me take all my little sticky notes off of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch, members of the board. Again, wish we didn't have to be here to do this today, but I'm very appreciative of the board's efforts and help to help us raise the awareness for CJD. CJD is very rare. Three to four hundred people worldwide will be diagnosed with this disease. Affects less than one in a million. It is 100% fatal. By the time you get the diagnosis, it's too late. But there is work being done. My family and I have, we have been able to sponsor some research grants that now bear Harvey's name to people researching prion disease, trying to find a treatment or a cure or even the cause of this horrible disease. Awareness and education is so important, and just a quick story on how that can be helpful. My granddaughter, who is in school in Spokane, Washington, just last week, she was working with one of her professors on her resume for grad school, for applications to grad school, and her professor saw, under her community service, her work with Strides and with the CJD Foundation. And she asked her, she said, "How do you know about CJD?" And my granddaughter and my grandfather passed away a little over four years ago from this disease, and her professor had gone on to tell her that a few days prior, her elderly neighbor had been diagnosed with CJD, and the family was struggling, trying to find any information, trying, knowing where to go. There was no help, which is typical of this disease. Many doctors don't even know what needs to happen, how to treat it, where to go. And so now that family, because Skyler was able to connect them with the CJD Foundation and talk to them as a family member who actually had gone through that, and so we laughed, and we said, in a typical Harvey Hall fashion, his outreach is wide, and so he is still able to reach people and help families who need it. My whole ambulance family is here with me, some of them are here with me today. I'm very grateful. They also, some of them, they will wear purple ribbons, or they'll be out in public and they'll have on their Strides t-shirt, and someone, if they ask them, "What's that about?", they are quick to let you know and give you some facts about CJD and just spread that knowledge, and that's really important. Here in Kern County, all of the hall ambulance vehicles now have purple ribbons on them, and if you'd asked me 20 years ago if there would have ever been another color other than orange and blue on a Harvey Hall vehicle, I would have laughed and said, "No way." But they now have that color purple on them, and so we're spreading awareness wherever we can. Again, thank you for your help for this proclamation and helping us spread awareness and education for CJD. Thank you.
Hello. Deanna?
Yes.
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you. That's always a tough one. I neglected to mention the hall ambulance employees and how involved they are in that fundraiser. Great group. This is equally serious and a disease that affects many here in Kern County, and I'm thankful that we have some people here that are trying to address it, but a lot of it can be addressed by our own behaviors, and I'm sure that you have lots of discussions with people about that, which is good. So I'll read this, and I'll turn it over to Deanna, and I'll allow her to say a few words, or I'll allow her to say a few words. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed November 12, 2022, as International Kreutzfeldt-Jacob Disease or CJD Awareness Day in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair, Zach Scrivener. It's dated today, November 8, 2022. Deanna, please tell us a little bit about what you have...
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you Supervisor Couch. My name is Deanna Sernas. I am a dietetic intern from Clinica Sierra Vista. Thank you for this proclamation. The American Diabetes Association's theme is "Today's Diabetes Hits Different." Diabetes affects and looks different depending on your age, gender, ethnicity, and income level. When diabetes is not controlled, it leads to life-threatening complications such as kidney failure, heart disease, stroke, blindness, and amputations. One in three of us will have diabetes in our lifetime. That could mean you, your neighbor, or me. Diabetes is a complex disorder where more than 90% of the care is performed by us and health professionals manage only about 10%. Learning how to take care of ourselves is crucial. Recent studies show that registered dieticians play an integral role in improving blood sugars by teaching how to integrate our preferences, culture, and budget to meet healthy targets. As a community, let's work together to prevent and manage diabetes. We can take these steps. One, we can identify our risk by teaming up with a Know Your Numbers program. Two, we can develop more walkable communities. Three, we can purchase local produce to add more color to our meals. Four, we can build a healthy lifestyle with the right food choices and physical activities, manage our stress, and monitor our blood sugar. And five, we can advocate for healthcare access that saves long-term costs and improves health outcomes with your employers. Seek coverage for early interventions with registered dieticians, diabetes educators, and healthcare providers. Today's diabetes may hit differently, but Kern County can hit back differently as well. Thank you.
There you go. I'm just going to take this with me apparently.
Michelle, I didn't see you there this morning. Good morning. I'm glad you're here as part of this.
Thank you. And this brings us to our last proclamation of the morning. This is to proclaim November 12, 2022, as Kern Oil Festival Day in Kern County, and Supervisor Peters will make this presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. A motion to approve?
We have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener and Honorable Board Members. It's my honor today to share this proclamation for Kern Oil Festival Day. As this board knows, more than 70% of the oil produced in California comes right here from our own backyard in Kern County, and frankly, we should be able to produce a lot more in California and help lower these gas prices, but I won't get into that. For over 100 years, Kern County has been producing oil and gas cleaner, better, and safer than anywhere else in the world. We're global experts in it, and in just a minute, I'll introduce Chad Hathaway, who's been a part of this great tradition and a great advocate for the industry, but before I do, I would like to read this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern and State of California has officially proclaimed November 12, 2022, as Kern Oil Festival Day in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Zach Scrivener.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much for all you've done. This is Michelle Chakuma Diltz. I always pronounce her name, but Michelle's one of our board members, along with several other members of our industry. But first, I want to thank you all, all the people in this room that have continuously fought for our industry. It means the world to us. It's our culture. It's what drives us. It's what fuels us. It's what feeds us. It also pays our bills. And so we thought this event, and this event's happened every two years, this is our fourth festival, I believe, third or fourth, that is just such a fabric of our community. Oil is so much more than fossil fuels. Oil is thousands of products in our daily lives. You could get rid of fossil fuels tomorrow, and you would still need oil. If you didn't have oil, you would have had to vent oil. And we are the head of oil production in Cali-
Good morning Chairman Scrivener, and Honorable Board Members. It's my honor today to share this proclamation for Kern Oil Festival Day. As this board knows, more than 70% of the oil produced in California comes right here from our own backyard in Kern County. And frankly, we should be able to produce a lot more in California and help lower these gas prices, but I won't get into that. For over 100 years, Kern County has been producing oil and gas cleaner, better, and safer than anywhere else in the world. We're global experts in it. And in just a minute, I'll introduce Chad Hathaway, who's been a part of this, a great tradition, and a great advocate for the industry. But before I do, I would like to read this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern and State of California has officially proclaimed November 12th, 2022, as Kern Oil Festival Day in Kern County. And this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, and signed by our Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivener.
Thank you very much for all you've done. This is Michelle Chikama Dilts, I always pronounce her her name, but Michelle's one of our board members, along with several other members of our industry. But first, I want to thank you all, all the people in this room that have continuously fought for our industry. It means the world to us, it's our culture, it's what drives us, it's what fuels us, it's what feeds us, it also pays our bills. And so, we thought this event, and this event's happened every two years, this is our fourth festival, I believe, third or fourth, that is just such a fabric of our community. Oil is so much more than fossil fuels. Oil is thousands of products in our day of lives. You could get rid of fossil fuels tomorrow, and you would still need oil. If you didn't have oil, you would have had to invent oil. And we are the head of oil production in California. And you have continuously and vigorously defended us, and thank you for that. And please come, be a part of our event. Thursday, this Thursday, we hopefully invite all of you to our VIP night. Almost all our industry, as it evolves and changes, and companies come and companies go, I can tell you, I'm not going anywhere. I was born in East Bakersfield, I'm not leaving East Bakersfield. I will be here till the last drop of oil is produced in this county. And I know there's a lot of us that feel the same way. So keep fighting for us, and thank you. And hopefully you come this Thursday night at Neon Park, love to have you. And then Saturday, the event is from 10 to 3, it's free. What's really cool about the event is that a lot of the people that work in the oil fields can't, their children can't come see what they do. And we bring the big pieces of equipment to Strandler Park, they're able to see the equipment, the people that run the equipment are there to describe what it does, and the kids can actually see what their parents do. And the many hardworking men and women in industry can actually display what they can't do on every day and explain. We also have incredible STEM zone exhibits from multiple companies and local educational institutions to kind of let kids get on the ground and do really fun things with science and technology. Lastly, we need to thank this industry for the transformation of wealth that has created in our community over the last 100 years. Oil has been a part of our fabric for over 100 years, and we don't do anything to celebrate it. Well, this is a day where we can celebrate it, and we should celebrate it. And thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your support. And I brought, oh, sorry, I brought five magnets. It says, "Oil fuels and feeds our family." They're magnets, so if nobody's going to sue Michelle for if it pakes the paint off your car. So I'll send them right here, if you guys want to take them.
Chad, we want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. One of the things that I always mention to folks in the oil industry when we're talking about them, talking about the issue, isn't the fact that we need to educate necessarily San Francisco and Los Angeles, we need to start with educating our own kids. Because if our own kids don't see the value of this industry, then the fight is lost. And so what you're doing is ensuring that our youth are seeing the value, and seeing the good-paying jobs, and the career paths, and everything that oil brings to our lives here in Kern County. So thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Can I say something, Seth?
Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Hey Chad, first of all, you know, hail to the east side, as you know, me, you, and Donnie holding it down over there. But, you know, I appreciate your emphasis on kids and the process of education. And I'll tell you Chad, I appreciate your consistency as a face and a family and a voice that we know, and that we love through the years and get to know. Because it is our families that we're talking about. It is the east side that we're talking about, it's the west side we're talking about. It's all of Kern County. It is our culture, it is our heritage, right? And it is our economy. And, you know, we have really a beautiful thing going on here with what is emerging, Chad, with the knowledge that is taking place. And I don't, I don't know anyone else on the forefront the way that you are, and in, you know, really communicating effectively what is at stake. And so Zach, you know, your remarks were just so spot on. And, you know, it's you, it's your family. When I think about oil, when I'm talking about oil, you know, Chad, it's always you that comes to my mind first. First of all, I don't want to get in trouble with you. Second of all, you know, I think of your kids, and your family, and all the times that we've had together in various places in Kern County. And I think, you know, we're, we're all of this together. You know, we're oil, we're renewables, we're ag, we're lots of things. But certainly fundamentally, this is who we are. And to be the experts of the world is so exciting, Chad, and to have your friendship and partnership in that is absolutely priceless. But your consistency, you know, helps, helps, I think, the conversation be really about your girls, right? And Tristan, and all the, just the beauty of East Bakersfield and Kern County. And you personify that so perfectly. And you do that with an open heart, and with warmth, and with honest friendship. And I just think that's just the best of us in Kern. So hats off to you, and I love you Chad.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 16, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. And so at this time, I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would like to make a public presentation. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and please state your name before you speak. Good morning.
Good morning Chair and Board of Supervisors, I am Cindy Para. I am the Chair at Golden Empire Transit. And today, I'm here with our CEO Karen King to offer a special invite to you this week, and also to remind you that there is still an open position on the GET Board, a county-appointed position. And I'd like to ask that you add that to your long list of things to do. And if we could get another board member coming into the new year, then we can move forward with everything that we'd like to do at GET. So with that, I will give it to our CEO.
Thank you Cindy, good morning Chair Scrivener and members of the board. I'd like to issue you an invitation to join us on November 10th at 10 o'clock in the morning for a ribbon cutting of the first hydrogen fueling station in Kern County. And you can also take a step on to one or more of our 10 hydrogen fuel cell buses. We have been mandated by the state to take a clean path and have all of our vehicles zero emission by 2040. And we're moving along that path, and would love to have you come celebrate with us. So if you're available, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. Nick Cullen, your Director of Animal Services, along with Annabelle. I just wanted to bring your attention that your county staff and volunteers pulled off a mega adoption, pet adoption event just this past Sunday. We worked collaboratively with the city of Bakersfield, and the city of McFarland, and Shafter, and multiple nonprofits. And, you know, we pulled off an adoption event that took about a year, was a year of planning. All told, it was about 80 animals from multiple organizations found there forever homes, 48 of which were from the county shelter. You know, in a lot of ways, I think the animal shelters here in Kern County, and beyond really, but especially here in Kern County, have struggled for the past 18 months with the amount of animals coming to us. It was wonderful, the focus on live outcomes for a day. We worked with donors in the community, like Haddad Dodge, TRB Oil Field Services, Lucky's Crew Animal Rescue, and Dr. Paul Ansolebehere, he's a veterinarian in the community, all to support this effort so that it was no cost to the county. We also worked with General Services, and Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Public Works, just a multitude of organization that came together, and it was a super successful Sunday. And you should be proud of your county staff, because they worked really hard to bring this together.
That's fantastic Nick, thank you so much for everything you're doing there, and all your staff. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning Ray Scott, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Board Member, Chairman Scrivener and Supervisors. I want to talk about the upcoming event this weekend at the Mechanics Bank Arena. It's our 12th Annual America Recycles Day. It's a free drive-through recycle event where residents of the city of Bakersfield, Kern County, can drop off recyclable items such as electronics. We also have paper shredding for people, where there's, at this time, there's no limit. So normally, a banker box costs about $5 a piece to shred. We're doing it for free because of Metro Shredding. Everybody from Allianz will be there for electronics. The county, once again, will be collecting batteries, so that way I can turn into the special waste facility. Also sponsored by Keep California Beautiful, and the Robert Bank Arena itself. MRC will be there to take in construction material. Because a lot of people don't know what to do with, except for taking it out to the landfill. But of course, MRC recycles CND material, and they'll be there to do that for everybody. The event starts from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the parking lot of the Mechanics Bank Arena on N Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this morning? Kevin Nasini, I'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you so much Chairman. I received a call a moment ago and stepped away from the dais to take a call from Christian Roma, who informed me that our dear friend, mentor, and personal hero, John Spalding, has passed away this morning. And I know he was a friend to all the board here. And I know he respected so profoundly all of you. And John promised us he would make it to Election Day. And I'm so thankful to him for a true friendship. And I would ask Chair if we could perhaps close in his honor today. That's all.
Absolutely, thank you Supervisor. Any other board member announcements or reports? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to page 7, item 42, under probation. This is a request for approval to award vendors recommended by the Community Corrections Partnership as successful, request for proposal vendors to provide community-based services for AB 109 individuals in Kern County and enter into contract negotiations. We have our probation chief, TR Miracle, good morning.
Members of the board, we started today with a full house, so I'm not going to take it personal that there's hardly anyone left here. But we talked about a lot of good things going on in the county, and I'm here to bring something I think that's really good, too. So I am TR Miracle, Chief Probation Officer, but I'm here today serving as my capacity as the Chairman of the Community Correction Partnership. I'm here to request your approval for the CCP's most recent RFP for community-based services. The Community Correction Partnership was created in 2011 as a result of AB 109 Criminal Justice Realignment. There's a total of 14 members on this committee. The sheriff, myself, the district attorney, public defender, BHRS, DHS, superintendent schools, ETR, Bakersfield Police Department, and more. Early on, the CCP realized that for realignment to be as successful as it could be, we would need a multi-pronged approach. Part of that plan was partnership with our community-based organizations, so they could provide supplemental and unique services for our new population. Our first RFP went out in 2012. Typically, they go for a three-year term, which is what we're asking for today. All of our current contracts with CBOs are set to expire December 31st of this year. The CCP dedicated almost $8 million to the RFP. This is by far the largest commitment yet. Our most recent RFP was for $5.5 million. We're trying to target a variety of services, including sober living environments, transitional housing, educational vocational, case management, and other best practices. There were 13 total proposals provided, for a total of $12.3 million in requests. So obviously, this was more than $4 million, more than the resources that we had. The county's protocols for RFP, as approved and required by this board, were adhered to throughout the process. The Evaluation Committee, who made the recommendations, consisted of representatives from the sheriff's office, the probation department, BHRS, the public defender, and ETR. I want to thank the hard-working, respected, and fair-minded staff who worked on this RFP. It's not an easy process, and they had to make hard decisions, especially when there's more requests than there are resources. On October 5th, the CCP approved the recommendation from the Evaluation Committee. There was no additional information or opposition from the public at that meeting, nor has there been any received since, as Lisa said, of yesterday. The CCP, this board, and our local department leaders should be commended for the significant investments in our community-based organizations. We are striving to make a change in people's lives to reduce recidivism, and make for a safer community as part of our overall comprehensive AB 109 plan. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the CCP's RFP recommendation to provide community-based services for AB 109 individuals in Kern County and enter into contract negotiations. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board before I go to the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would like to make any comments or ask questions. Okay, seeing none, then I'll return to the board. The requested action is to approve.
So moved, thank you TR for everything.
Second? We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have several items to consider in closed session. We have items 59 and 60 under the County Administrative Office, and under County Council, we have items 61, 62, and 63. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session in the memory of John Spalding. We are adjourned.
This is an aspect of the Marine Corps that a lot of Marines don't know about, and a lot of the public.